I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools, leading students to success.
Thank you, good evening. I'm Darryl Flynn and I'm the acting chair for this evening. Chair, Chairman Sablet and Vice Chair. Gordon are both out of town, one missing their, not missing, their flight was canceled, so are not able to get here in time. We ask for the courtesy of the audience and board members that you please silence your cell phones. So we ask that you do that now. And I ask that you please stand and bow your head for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're working on getting Mrs. Gordon on the phone so she can be with us electronically. Tonight is one of our favorite meetings. We have invited our 2015 Modern Woodmen of America Speech Contest winners to be with us, and we're going to hear from them in just a moment. They are Danica Poole and Cassandra Cruz. Hey, excuse me. Mrs. Gordon, you're on the air, so we're just about to start with our Modern Woodmen orators. Thank you. This year's speech contest theme was an interesting landmark. That was it, an interesting landmark. I was privileged to be one of the judges in the afternoon session, and Mrs. Cadel was a judge in the morning session. I think, I mean, yes, in the morning session. I think we chose some pretty, pretty excellent speakers. We're going to begin now with Danica, if you'll come forward. And she is preparing to give her speech to us. And we will share with you that Danica was a student at East Lake Elementary School when she won in May, and this year she will attend Corner Lake Middle School. Danica's speech is titled Walt Disney World, and she's going to be attending, as we said, Corner Lake in the fall. Danica, when you're ready, the floor is yours.
If I say the happiest place on earth, can you name the interesting landmark I selected? What if I add Magic Kingdom, Epcot, Hollywood Studios, and Animal Kingdom? Did I paint a Disney image in your head? As Florida residents, we have the privilege of hosting one of the most popular worldwide destinations. Walt Disney World opened October 1st, 1971, and according to Forbes Magazine, is the most visited resort in the world, with 52.5 million visitors each year, and an average of 130,000 people visiting the four theme parks each day. Over one-third of the daily visitors will enter Magic Kingdom. Disney World covers over 27,000 acres of land in Lake Buena Vista, Florida. Hosted on the land are 27 resort hotels, four theme parks, four golf courses, two water parks, one camping resort, and one residential area. In 1959, Walt began looking for a second park to supplement Disneyland in California. Walt's goal was to attract the interest of those who lived east of the Mississippi River and control a larger piece of land. While flying over Orlando in 1963, Walt was impressed with the well-developed network of roads and began secretly purchasing acreage near Bay Lake. The secrecy of Walt Disney's plan was revealed on October 21st, 1965, when a reporter pieced together details and stuck her neck out to predict Disney would build a new theme park on the acquired land. The headline read, "We Say Mystery Industry Is Disney." Disney confirmed that he intended to build, in quote, "the greatest attraction in the history of Florida." Sadly, Walt died before his dream realized. Fortunately, Walt's brother and business partner, Roy Disney, managed the construction of the resort's first phase. Roy dedicated the property that would be called Walt Disney World in his brother's honor. When Magic Kingdom opened in 1971, it employed 5,500 cast members. Today, Walt Disney World employs over 66,000 cast members. For Florida residents, the impact of the single largest employer in the world being in our backyard is significant to our local economy. Walt Disney World is most definitely the happiest place on earth. I may not remember all the details of my first trip to Disney, but I look at pictures reminding me how remarkable rides are, the exciting entertainment, the delicious food, and most certainly, the character visits. Pluto is now my favorite character, but when I was younger, it was a love-hate relationship. My first time meeting Pluto was horrific. He approached me and I screamed and cried. Hey, wouldn't you be scared if a dog three times your size snuck up on you? It was a bit intimidating, and I was young, don't hold it against me. Pluto and I have now repaired our relationship, and he holds the top spot as my all-time favorite character. Walt Disney World is the cherry on top of everyone's ice cream sundae. How can the 52.5 million people who visit this interesting landmark each year be wrong?
Congratulations, Danica. That was an outstanding job. Of course, in the, in the audience, your proud parents are there supporting you. Parents, would you stand up and take a bow as well? And a sister, I think there's a sister there, so you can stand up too. Our next winner is Cassandra Cruz. Cassandra, let's see, are you mic'd up yet? Okay, if you'll come forward. I'd like to share with the audience that you attended Lake Nona Middle School last year, and you will, I guess you'll continue. You're going to be in eighth grade? Fantastic. Cassandra's winning speech is titled "9/11: The Day That Changed America." The floor is yours.
If every memorial tells a story, the September 11th memorial had a more complex one than most. There was the most basic story a memorial could put forth, that of the commemoration of 3,000 lives lost. Hope, togetherness, perseverance, and determination. 8,151 tons of structural steel, 550,000 gallons of water pumped per minute. This memorial was built to remember all the innocent lives lost years before September 11th, 2001. Boom, snap, crash. The morning sounds of New York start, and the city is awake. It's a beautiful day in New York City. You kiss your family goodbye, and as you're walking into your office building, you're thinking to yourself, "It's going to be a great day." It was supposed to be a great day. At 8:45 a.m. on a clear Tuesday morning, an American Airlines Boeing 767 loaded with 20,000 gallons of jet fuel crashed into the North Tower of the World Trade Center. Impact of the gaping hole near the 80th floor of the 110-story skyscraper instantly killing hundreds of people and trapping hundreds more on higher floors. As evacuation of the tower and its twin got underway, television cameras broadcasted live images of what appeared to be a freak accident. Then, 18 minutes after the first plane hit, a second Boeing 767, United Airlines Flight 175, appeared out of the clear sky and sliced into the South Tower of the World Trade Center. Collision caused an explosion, raining ash and debris on the ground. It was declared then and there, and America was under attack. The horror in New York took a catastrophic turn for the worst when the South Tower of the World Trade Center collapsed in a massive cloud of dust and snow. 30 minutes later, the second tower collapsed. September 11th was supposed to be another day where we could come home and eat dinner happily. 2,960 people never came home. People from 83 countries died on that day, and reading from 5 years old. The National September 11th Memorial is a tribute of remembrance and honor to the nearly 3,000 people killed in the terror attacks of 2001, as well as the six people killed in the World Trade Center bombing in 1993. Memorial's twin reflecting pools are nearly an acre in size and feature the largest man-made waterfalls in North America. They sit within the footprints of where the towers once stood. The designs were selected from a global competition that featured more than 5,200 entries from 60 states. The names of every person who died in 2001 and in 1993 are inscribed in bronze panels surrounding the memorial pool. I grew up learning and researching all about 9/11 and how our lives as Americans have changed since the day. These attacks have brought us all together as one. It'll remind us that America is a nation, a union brought together by tragedies and disasters. America is a family of all skin colors and religion, and we will come together to create a barricade of love, family, and hope that can never be broken. September 11th, 2001, is a day of sorrow and tragedy that will forever be in our hearts. Boom, snap, crash. The world is awake, this time with a memory of our loved ones in our minds, hearts, and lives. 8,151 tons of structural steel, 550,000 gallons of water pumped per minute, 1,960 people. So, America has changed.
Well, Cassandra, congratulations to you as well. Terrific job. Your proud parents, I know, are in the audience as well. So, parents, you, and I think that's a brother and sister, if you'll stand up and let us clap. Thank you. We're going to get to each of us if we want to say something, but I know it was terrific. Right now, though, we want to thank Modern Woodmen of America for developing this contest, because it offers our students an opportunity to develop clear, you know, really develop good skills and clear thinking and public speaking. Mr. Al Craig from Modern Woodmen of America, he's here with us tonight. Would you like to come to the podium, please? And I think you have some certificates to present, but please, if you'd like to come and, yes, Danica and Cassandra, if you'll come and join Mr. Craig, it's, it's great to have you here with us.
This must be the podium. We have a medallion. We have one medallion. This was brought down by Danica. I'm going to give it back to her. She won this at the national level. Cassandra, we got to bring her. We did three presentations. She had one gift like her own. And Ms. Meg Bowen has done a position winner, sitting for him. And good point to say you guys did a great job. And all across the nation, folks, when dictates went forward to our own office, there was over, they were competing against what turns out to be over 100,000 students. Does our quick stunt that he sees, well, at the Prince of Texas, we're proud. Good job.
Mr. Craig, thank you for being a great partner in education to OCPS. We appreciate what you bring, and I know you've got some of your partners there, and we appreciate you too. So, thank you so much.
Darryl Flynn, Darryl. How's that, Darryl? Darryl has worked on this the last four years, well, four or five years on this program. And I started that program here in Orange County on the Apple Podcasts in 1984. This is the 31st and 2nd year that Orange County is participating in the program, and they have one of the greatest programs in the nation right here in Orange County. And we're proud of Orange County.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. And Mrs. Cadel, I think we did a good job in judging.
I think we did an excellent job in judging, and congratulations to both of you, and congratulations to everyone who supports these young people, and to all of our schools, all of our principals in fifth and, fifth grade and middle schools who encourage the children to hone their public speaking skills. So, and to the Modern Woodmen, it's always my favorite time of the year. I think I judged six, six of the competitions this year, and I loved every minute of it.
Thank you, Mrs. Cadel. Mrs. Colbert?
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. So, I don't know if you might have noticed, one of the great marks of a good orator is the ability to evoke emotion in those who are listening to you. And I was really, I have to say, overcome. Danica, your speech just filled me with joy. And Cassandra, your speech really made me very emotional and sentimental. But the greatest emotion I think I'm experiencing right now is, is pride. And I'm so proud of you both and how you represent us at Orange County Public Schools. And you've also brought back some great memories as both of my sons competed in this very contest. And I remember as a parent, just that overwhelming feeling of pride and joy after listening to your, your young, young child do such a great job. So, thank you very much for sharing that with us tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mrs. Robinson?
I too want to add our thanks to the Modern Woodmen, folks, because it really is a wonderful opportunity for students. And these two young ladies did such a fabulous job tonight. And what you don't know just yet, and I too had two of my three children that competed in this every year and loved it, and they, the skills that you're learning right now with this, they carry on with you forever. My oldest uses in her, is, uses it in her job all the time. She used it in college. She said, "Oh, Mom, when you do these group projects," I'm always the one that says, "I'll do the speech. I'll do the speech. You write the stuff. I'll do the speech." And it really, my son's done debate in high school, so you, you're going to have many opportunities to use those wonderful talent that you both have. So, congratulations, and thank you for, as Ms. Colbert said, invoking such beautiful emotions tonight. Congrats.
Ms. Gould?
It is tough enough to write and learn a speech like that, but to evoke the emotion that you both evoked is, is truly amazing. And I won't repeat that that is what all of Mrs. What Robinson said, but certainly, that ability will serve you for the rest of your life in order to be able to communicate that clearly and crisply and move us. Because I had joy when we were talking about the Disney, which is one of my most favorite places on earth. And having lived in New York and been in the towers many times, you evoked a lot of memories for me on what a great place that still is and, and how true we are as a united country. So, thank you for bringing all that forward to us, too. You did a fantastic job, and what an amazing program to allow that to showcase.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. Mrs. Gordon, do you have anything that you'd like to?
Well, I, I, I've had an opportunity to be a part of it in the eighties when it started with Belkin Johnson, principal of Orange Center Elementary. I had worked with Mr. Johnson as a guidance counselor, and we were fortunate to be one of the schools to help to kick it off. I just think that really more of this, and we cannot thank them enough, and I want to congratulate the winners again. They were just excellent. Each year, it's another notch higher, and we just thank everybody. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman. Couple of things I would love to add. First of all, I, I think there are probably no prouder individuals in the room than the parents who are here tonight. But I also want to say teachers and principals and others who have helped to coach these young people are extremely proud as well. And as your superintendent, I actually have the joy of having 200,000 children that I'm very pleased to be proud of. But I want you to know how extremely proud we are of you and how well you represented Orange County Public Schools at a national level. Congratulations to you all, including moms and dads.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you for supporting this program and for the staff that coordinates it all. It's, it's a big endeavor. So, thank you, Cassandra and Danica. Thank you, parents. Thank you, Mr. Craig and your team. We are going to go on with the rest of our meeting, and you are welcome to stay here for riveting discussions, but if you'd like to sneak out and have the rest of your evening available to you, now's, now's your time. Thank you. Before we start with our strategic plan update, there is a group in the audience that I'd like to recognize. Sarah Duff and her Boy Scout Troop 296 are out there. So, welcome. Thank you for being with us. And Ms. Duff, thank you for volunteering to be with these young men. So, thank you. Tonight is our legislative update. Scott Howitt, Senior Executive Director of Planning Government and, Governmental and Labor Relations, will lead us. So you can go ahead and start.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Jenkins, board members. It's great to be here. I know that session ended over a month ago, but I think it's never too late to do an update going into the new legislative season and some of the things that are before us. Both, I'll be reviewing today the budget, but also be reviewing substantive bills that passed during the regular session. Thank you. Just some general information, the 2015 legislative session took place during its, its normal time from March and April, and the House ended up leaving three days early and signee die leaving the Senate there to finish out and round out their business. Needless to say, they called a special session which dealt with the budget. So, the substantive legislation that had gone through, or that was going to go through and pass, it passed as of that Wednesday before the final day, and then a special session took place beginning June 1st through the 19th, Friday the 19th. Just to go over some of the budget results of the first, this is the first calculation, so it's the final conference report that the legislature issued coming out of session on June 19th. Just to give you an overview of the state, so the statewide numbers, 30,000 new students, a 781 million increase in the FEFP statewide, 287 million in new state funds, and 493.5 million in local funding. So, that would be based on the, the millage that, that will be approved later on. That was the estimate statewide. The per student funding, the average was about 3%, $207.05 per student, and an average of 7,900, I'm sorry, $7,097.49. What does that mean for OCPS? The OCPS numbers were estimated to get 5,300 of those 30,000 new students for this year based on the state budget. $76 million increase in total funding and a $202.50 increase in funds. 77,052 cents is the average funding per student. About $46 below the state average and 240 below the 2007 FEFP level. So, still have a ways to go to get back to where we were. Categorical funding increases, there was zero for the safe schools, and increase for this year, which goes towards SROs and other initiatives, and then there was zero in the reading instruction allocation. Just to go through a couple of the, the General Appropriations Act and some of the substantive things that were in the, in that, as well as the implementing bill. Fixed capital outlay, there's $50 million for, for public schools, and for charter schools, there's $50 million as well. Voluntary pre-K is the same levels as before in the base student allocation. The digital classroom allocation, which began last year at 40 million, was increased to $60 million statewide, and it was tied to a digital assessment and gap analysis, which was later, was vetoed by the, by the governor, and I'll talk about that. Florida's Best and Brightest Teacher Scholarship Program, there's $44 million in the budget for 4,400 student, teachers statewide to receive a $10,000 scholarship for, for essentially being in the 80th percentile for their SAT or ACT, and also receiving a highly effective teacher rating. The Student Standard Attire Provision that was in the bill granted $10 million to any district that had a, essentially a board policy that K through 8, they had a uniform policy in place for the entire district. So, that, that would be for any district that already has approved one or will approve one prior to September 1st. And again, the Department of Education had a $3 million appropriation in the budget, which was vetoed by the governor to do a third-party assessment and gap analysis of digital classroom reading. The implementing legislation included a few changes and a few additional things that we've seen in the past that we're continuing for this year. Instructional materials, says that the, the school district must certify to the commissioner an expenditure plan for instructional content and technology. It continues the lowest 300 list of lowest-performing elementary schools and the requirement to provide an additional hour of reading instruction. That list is the same list that was approved the prior year, so there's no change in those schools. The, they expanded the Personal Learning Scholarship Accounts, or PSLA, or PLSA's, specifically for children that are three or four years old before September 1st, and any of those students that are not being claimed in the FEFP for services that, that were doing or through any VPK program. Expanded the eligibility for disabilities and also included additional things that could be funded, such as tuition and certain services. It also requires that scholarship funding organizations provide a surety bond for, for managing these. The digital classroom allocation changes the date that we have to submit from March 1st to October 1st each year, and the plan must be verified by the superintendent, and, and the plans that were given to the superintendent by the charter schools, that they're in compliance as well. The DOE must confirm that each superintendent has certified to the commissioner that, and has approved their digital classroom assessments, and that it supports the digital classroom allocation. There's a provision in there that's for federally connected student supplement. It's for those districts that actually have large military bases, districts that are impacted by, say, NASA land holdings or others that could jeopardize their, that could jeopardize their, their tax collections as far as their property values. It also includes educator liability insurance program, which the DOE would allow every full-time teacher to be covered for, for teacher liability. It also includes a provision in there for a change, slight change in the Bright Futures Scholarship Program, that part of community service could be performing an activity Scholarship Program, that part of community service could be performing activities or activities on behalf of candidates for public office. That was a change or clarifying change. Schoolhouse rocks. Substantive bills, the, for those of you that remember that, substantive bills, just to go through, to transition from the budget that was passed, and all of those things were passed in June. These are substantive provisions, and many of these things we already know about. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Testing and Accountability Bill that the governor signed early so that we could implement many of the things that he did as far as his executive order, and then expand those. And the legislature actually got that out of committee into the floor pretty quickly. This allows districts to set a school start date no earlier than August 10th. That was the first provision in this bill. It eliminates unnecessary and duplicative testing. It makes pert not a requirement for high school students. Prohibits the final exams in addition to any statewide standardized EOC assessments. It provides flexibility to districts to monitor the proficiency of K-12, K-3 students. And it streamlines the provisions relating to fourth grade promotion and also the district K-12 comprehensive reading plans. It also attempts, and we'll get further direction on this, to eliminate classroom, class time interruption by allowing other district employees to do some of the administration of state assessments and serve as proctors. And we'll get more guidance on that. So, that'll help to, from taking teachers away from their students. Waiting on additional direction on it. There's additional transparency as far as keeping a uniform assessment calendar out there and available to the public. It grants greater flexibility in measuring performance and teacher evaluations. It actually moves evaluation, the student performance piece of teacher evaluations, from a minimum of 50% for teachers that have more than three years' experience down to a minimum of 30%, or 1/3, 33 and 1/3%. It requires the state board to publish a comparison of district evaluation and state performance results, and certain Title I schools will receive school recognition awards if funds are available. And that would be for high schools that maintain a B or an A, not just an A once they get to that. The next bill, that was the major piece of legislation that went through. The next several bills are still important, still may involve school board policy changes or other implementation from, on our end. But I'm going to go through several of these pretty quickly and then be happy to answer questions. House Bill 41 by Representative Metz was dealing with hazardous walking conditions, requires districts to work with local entities on resolving these hazardous walking conditions, and then requires that they be placed in a five-year capital plan of the entity that if they are in fact notified by the school district, that it is hazardous. One of the criticisms of this bill is it didn't go far enough in order to actually provide funding to correct the issue that led to the hazardous walking. But it does require documentation and also notification of the hazardous condition. The Juvenile Justice Bill by Garcia expands the juvenile civil citation law to go beyond where we're already seeing that in some areas. It's a way to give an alternative to some of the other things that, tools that law enforcement has. So, that was a bill that made it through the process, was considered, supported by many in both the House and Senate. Senate Bill 290 by Senator Brandis, carrying a concealed weapon or concealed firearm. This has to do with mandatory evacuations and carrying firearms from a mandatory evacuation out of those areas and being able to have those in your possession and concealed if in fact you're licensed. The reason why I raise this, the issue is, we have a lot of evacuation sites and shelters. This is an issue where now it's legal to carry your gun out of your residence and with you as you evacuate. But coming to a school site as an evacuation location, there'll have to be some issues addressed with how we go about dealing with this law as a part of our evacuation plans and what we're doing. Senate Bill 778 by Senator Hayes is a, it prohibits local preference, but when it comes to procurement issues for construction, but only if more, if 50% or more of the project is funded through state funds. If it's funded through local funds, such as a halfpenny sales tax or other derived local funds, then this local preference would not apply. So, this was a way in which if, for example, if PICO funds was, if PICO funds were the majority of the money being funded for a project, then local preference would not be allowed in that case when it came to the procurement process. In voluntary examination of minors, this bill requires certain things to happen if in fact students are Baker acted, are taken out of a school and placed in a facility. It requires specific actions by the school as far as notifying the parents and also notifying, notification from the facility in which the student would be taken to. Few other bills, All American Flag Act by Representative Cortez requires that all flags purchased by state, county, or municipalities for public use must be made in America, made in the United States after July 1, 2016. Senate Bill 982 by Senator Thompson expressly prohibits discrimination because of pregnancy. And House Bill 7019 officially changes the name from Workforce Florida to Career Source Florida, Inc., within the statutes. Some of the bills that died that we'll see that'll come back next year, I'm sure. House Bill 1145 is the bill that opened up districts and zones for transfers based on availability of capacity. That was, that also included a provision in there that dealt with transparency as far as comparing public school funding for students as compared to the other categories within the budget and being able to show those on a per-student basis. Some of those requirements showed duplicative funding when it came to how we fund students, by the way we, that we were required to report them through the transparency requirements. And so, some of those things will have to be cleaned up, and we'll work through that. 1552 also contained the capacity and transfer policy, the open zone policy. It contained a number of other things, including charter school revisions and modifications to those requirements. Some of the provisions in 1552 will also be back, I'm sure. We've, they've, there's already been a bill filed that relates to extracurricular activities and the FHSA bill that didn't make it through last year. Senator Gates had a bill, 948. There wasn't enough slides in my presentation to list all of the bills that were covered in 948. There was about 20 individual, separate issues that were connected. Some of those dealt with dual enrollment textbooks for homeschool children, FHSA reform, collegiate high school program expansion, digital technology, digital classrooms. There was a lot of, a lot of bills strung together in 948. We probably won't see that one back, but parts of it we will. Representative Cortez had a charter school bill that attempted to bring more accountability to charter schools. It also contained the provision that required that school districts share in their 1.5 mil capital funding that was amended into that bill in the Education Committee. So, we'll probably see that issue and this bill back next session, I would say. The Student Attire Bill, I talked about that on the funding side. This was a standalone bill that made it through the House. It'll probably be back. They funded it for one year, but I think they were looking at making it a recurring requirement. There's also a bill that dealt with instruction for hospital, hospitalized and homebound students, dealing with the, them hiring teachers or the collaboration agreements that they have with school districts. This was an issue out of Pinellas specifically in the Children's Hospital in Pinellas. So, it wasn't, it didn't have to do with the hospital, it was more of the. And then, the, there was a school board, District School Boards Bill by Senator Legg that required school boards to adopt strategic plans and revise some of their ethical conduct, making sure that they have ethics policies in place and all of those. That bill died, and I'm sure that that will be back because they're encouraging more districts to do what you all are already doing and revising, have a strategic plan. So, this was part of, part of a bill that he had put forward. That's it for the substantive bills that have died and gone by the wayside, but will be back, I'm sure. And session does start early this year, so committee weeks will begin in September, and we'll run straight through the first week in December. Thank you. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Howitt. Members of the board, as you can well see and as you've certainly witnessed in years past, we are well represented in Tallahassee by Mr. Howitt. Additionally, I think he does an excellent job of summarizing, both for staff and for board members, in a comprehensive manner, all that has taken place, particularly with an extended session, which is yet to be extended. And so, I want to commend Mr. Howitt certainly. We are also well aware that this board has been very active in lobbying for appropriate measures on behalf of the students. That as well. We are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Mr. Howitt. Ms. Moore?
That is definitely true. We make our annual trek to Tallahassee. I guess in the past, it's been marched. We're going to be a little earlier this year. And Mr. Howitt takes one here, one there, and manages to keep us all focused on our marching orders. So, one of my assignments was to attempt to visit Senator Hayes on the issue with the hazardous walk areas. And now that the bill is passed, Mr. Howitt, maybe you could explain to me, I know it'll be over with Mr. Eugene's shop, but how this is actually going to work out. I have some fear and trepidation about this issue and dealing with the municipalities because we've always had such wonderful relationships with our cities. And so, hopefully, you can add a little bit more clarity to give me some peace of mind that we'll still be able to work out all these different issues with our municipalities.
You know, I think we have great partnerships with our municipalities on working through a lot of these issues. Like I said in my comments, I think the biggest criticism of the bill was the funding component. If you're going to put it, if you're going to put a requirement that it goes into a capital plan, what is the funding mechanism to resolve the issue? Does the school board just continue to bus students, you know, as a result of the hazardous walking condition? I think working together and putting, you know, the notification process will be good. Everyone will be on the same page. I think as far as the funding, that's always going to be an issue. One of the things that we talked to Senator Simmons about, and he was open to, and it was an idea that came out of Mike Eugene's shop and the discussions that we had, is looking at, there was another bill that Senator Simmons had had that didn't make it through this year, that dealt with school, running school bus, going around school bus arms by cars and increasing the fines $63 in order to, and we looked at maybe the possibility of combining these two issues and creating a revenue source to address some of the hazardous conditions. He was, he was interested in talking about that, but at the point in which the session, things were happening very quickly, and this bill had already been discussed at length with the other municipalities and county groups. And so, they, he was looking at possibly doing something and bringing his bill back. He still has a lot of concerns about school bus safety and cars going around buses. So, that could be an avenue by which they create a trust fund maybe to address these issues. Or since the local entities are already collecting these fines, they can require they set them aside to address them. I mean, that was some of the things that they talked about. But I think we'll continue to work together. I don't think this just puts everyone on notice that here's the hazardous walking condition, and it's in the five-year work plan.
Madam Chair, just a follow-up to Dr. Jenkins. I'm sure they'll have a process in place because my process probably wasn't the most kosher. I heard at one of our community meetings for an elementary school that when we changed the parent pickup line to go down a certain street, I said, "Well, there's no sidewalk there." So, the next morning, I went with my cellphone and looked at the sidewalk that was missing. I texted it to the mayor, and two months later, I have a sidewalk. So, I'm sure that's not the process they had in mind, but it worked for me.
It's a great process. How do we get that in statute? We need that in statute. That's very powerful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
To your point, I've done that myself. You take a picture, and I just noticed at one of my schools where the students couldn't walk on the sidewalk because it was overtaken by a tree, I took a picture, sent it to the city commissioner that represents that area. It's been a year or more. Just this week, I noticed it's down, and they're repairing the sidewalk. So, it does work. It does work.
Wind in America happens in 30 days.
30 days, wow. I had a question. Thank you so much for your wonderful information. It's a lot to think about. And you're right, we were busy last year, and we're going to be busy again this year. So, a question. HB 7043 that died, the standard student attire bill, but then it says down there at the bottom that it's for one year only? It fell under SB 2500A, is that correct?
I made a note on that because I referenced it. It was actually placed when it died, when the substantive bill died. They actually adopted it as part of the budget bill that was passed. So, those bills are only good for one year. The appropriation and the substantive language is good for one year.
So, the $10 million, is that across all districts? Is it going to be shared? It's not $10 million per district?
No. It's shared, yes. And it's first come, first served. So, whatever boards submit their policy and show evidence and verify that they have a K-8 uniform policy district-wide, they'll receive $10 a student. It's $10 a student until the money runs out. Miami Dade will eat that up. Miami Dade has testified that they have a countywide uniform, standard attire, and so they would alone eat that up.
What an interesting thing, that they'll give us money for uniforms but not technology. Very interesting. Very interesting. Well, thank you for clarifying. That was a little confusing. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Mr. Howitt, thank you for your work and for the presentation. Oh, Mrs. Gordon?
No, I just think that that's all, that's a very fine report, and she has done a lot of work, also helping us to get that information to our local schools. I know that we will be doing that also. So, I thank the Superintendent and Scott for, you know, doing that. That's great, and I appreciate it because that's a lot to be able to understand as we start this new school year. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go, continue on with the rest of our meeting. And I do need to make an announcement here about any individual who would like to address an item on the consent or non-consent agenda may do so by completing the yellow form that's at the end of this table with Mrs. McGill, Mrs. McGill. The chair will then call you to speak when the item you have signed up for is before the board. Please understand that in accordance with parliamentary procedure, this is your opportunity to testify before the board. It is not a question-and-answer session, nor is it an opportunity to engage and debate with the staff or with the board. Staff is available to meet with you before or after. Should you have any questions, and board members are always happy to meet with you after the meeting should you wish to discuss your issues of concern with them, you would have three, you will have three minutes to address the board. And if you have any schedule constraints, please let Mrs. McGill know, and if possible, we can accommodate you. We do want to say that we do have the presentations and the agenda before us on our monitors. If it looks like we're, you know, really staring at our screens, it's because we're following the agenda. In regard to roll call, we have all members here except for Chairman Sablet, and Ms. Gordon is participating via phone. So, another fun part of our meetings is the introduction of newly appointed administrators. Superintendent Jenkins, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two this evening. First, we have- First, we have Benjamin Alvarado, who was Cypress Creek High School's instructional staff, will become the assistant principal at Cypress Creek High School.
Thank you. I want to thank school board members, our board members, our staff, my family, my mother, sister, my wife, and my great teacher. There are two colleagues important teachers that mentor me through, and I'm truly grateful for them. As a part of our trying to help the school, I feel honored and privileged to work for this district and as a new staff. Thank you.
Second, we have Luriela Clemente, who is Frank's Elementary School instructional staff, will become the new assistant principal at Azalea Park Elementary.
We would like to thank the school board and Dr. Barbara Jenkins and her staff for the opportunity given to me to serve our community as assistant principal of Azalea Park. I would also like to recognize my mentors, Dr. Rosita Riley, my husband, who's my strongest supporter, my children, Christina, Antonio, and Carmen, who's not here, and my family and friends who have always believed in me and have supported me all the way. Thank you.
I have to say, I didn't recognize Dr. Riley sitting there. You look so young. You look, you look so good. That's what we say to retirees when they come back, they look younger. Dr. Riley and Mr. Riley, I believe, sitting there as well. Thank you for being here tonight as well. Area superintendent, of great reputation, certainly still missed among us, but I thought there was some younger woman sitting there. I thought, I thought the husband looked familiar, but I certainly did not, I certainly did not recognize Dr. Riley. You look wonderful. Tells us that you're enjoying a well-deserved retirement. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Mrs. Robinson?
Ms. Clemente, congratulations and welcome to District 6. We're going to have a lot of fun out at Azalea Park. I know you're in good, capable hands with Kelly. Y'all are going to have a great time, and I look forward to getting out and seeing the Panthers. I heard all about their Panther pup party they had, and it's just, I love the little guys. So congratulations, and I look forward to seeing you on campus. And Ms. Riley, Rosita, you look fabulous. So good to see you. Congrats.
Thank you. Ms. Colbert?
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Mr. Alvarado, I just want to say congratulations. I'm so excited about all the new leadership at Cypress Creek High School. And what you don't know is that you are the one they wanted so badly in this position. So I'm really excited about the future of Cypress Creek and, and happy to be working with you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado and Ms. Clemente. Welcome, and welcome to our board meeting and congratulations. It's great to be able to be here for your big announcements. So thank you so much, and for the families and supporters and mentors that are here, thank you as well. Dr. Riley, good to see you. All right. With that, you, again, as the chair would say, you can stay to see how the sausage is made, or you can go ahead and have the rest of your evening to yourself. So thank you so much and congratulations again. Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, there is one change to the agenda, removal of item 1403, request approval of the First Amendment to the lease agreement between the school board and the town of Eatonville. That has been withdrawn. Council has informed us that the town of Eatonville would like to further revise that agreement. It will be brought back at a later time.
Thank you. The chairman finds cause to amend the agenda as requested. May I have a motion in a second?
So move.
Okay. Okay. Mrs. Cadel made the motion and seconded by Ms. Moore. Okay, Ms. Moore. Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We don't have any public hearings today, so do we have anyone signed up to speak? No one signs. So I think we go right to approving. Right, okay. So may I have a motion to adopt the, okay, Ms., all right. The motion made by Ms. Robinson and seconded by Ms. Ghul, all in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, agenda is, a consent agenda is adopted. Wow, okay. We don't have any emergency items. Madam Superintendent, no emergency items, but you're up here. Reports?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are looking forward to the next several days as we prepare to start another school year. I will tell you, our brand-new teachers are in their orientations this week. The rest of the teachers return next week. As you well know, since we are meeting here, the ELC is not available, so you weren't invited to our typical great beginnings meeting, but we have over 1,100 new teachers coming to the district. And so in their various meetings, which are split up, they are receiving video greeting from the superintendent. We'll certainly have opportunities afterwards to meet board members and such, but we could not have that meeting here today. Secondly, I would love for you to meet and actually have him come forward for a few moments as he's making his way to the podium. You, you will recall LaFrances Trotter has been with us for some time with CTA. She is now chief of staff for CTA, and we have in the building with us tonight, coming forward to make a few comments, Mr. Dennis Kelly, who is the new CTA administrator. Welcome, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Superintendent Jenkins, and thank you, Ms. Flynn. I am Dennis Kelly. I am from San Francisco, California, where for 47 years I was a member of the faculty and staff in that, in that fair city. LaFrances Trotter, as was mentioned, is the chief of staff now at the OCC TA. Joe Barry Segna is the assistant, and we have with us also tonight Mark Mitchell, who is our executive director. The purpose that we have in being here is to see that the Orange County Classroom Teachers' Association becomes a fully functioning representative of the teachers of the Orange County Public Schools, sharing in the work and rewards of the teaching profession. Our members work to serve the children for the best education of the children, and we adults must strive to provide the best learning conditions, which are themselves then the best teaching conditions for their teachers. And together, between us and you and the administration, we can do this. Together, working with mutual trust and respect, we can provide the very best education for our students that Florida has to offer. During the first few weeks, we will attempt to visit every school and every teacher with this message. We have coworkers who will support us in this effort, not just this old man going around to every school, believe me. And we hope you will help us as we reach out to create a new day for teaching in the Orange Public Schools. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you.
I would add, I would add, Madam Chair, that we did have opportunity to meet privately with the new administrator, certainly very encouraged, looking forward to having a very productive year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Welcome. Mrs. Cadel?
I just want to say welcome, and we look forward to working with you for all of the teachers in Orange County and also for all of our OESPA members. We just, we look forward to working with you and doing what's right for our families here in Orange County.
Ms. Colbert?
I just want to say, welcome, Mr. Kelly, to our balmy city. I hope you're enjoying. We're very, very glad to have you, and we look forward to working together with you for the benefit of our teachers. Our teachers are, are truly our greatest asset in, in doing right by our children, and we really welcome you and look forward to a great working relationship for the benefit of all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
I too just want to say welcome, and I'm so glad to know you're here tonight. Thank you so much for taking the time to come out tonight and introduce yourself to us. We, we are so excited. I understand you're a man of collaboration, and we're very excited about that because it is very important to collaborate and be partners with our teachers, not seen as opposing each other, because our teachers are the most important part of our whole school system. So I just thank you, thank you, thank you for coming out here tonight to introduce yourself, and we look forward to working together.
Ms. Moore?
Yes, welcome, Mr. Kelly. I want to see that schedule of how you're going to manage all 199 schools and how you're going to work that out, because we might like to get a lesson from you on how to do that. But thank you. Dr. Jenkins, I had a quick question. You said that, that it was 1,000 teachers. I was just curious how we were coming and filling all slots and how we're doing with making sure we have hired a sufficient number of teachers for every school, and if there's any difference between the rates of fulfillment in the title one schools.
We will certainly get the board an update. We track vacancies on a daily basis, area superintendents, along with principals, and we have some guaranteed contracts that were issued to teachers that we are now placing in schools if there are remaining vacancies. I believe we are below the 200 mark, which means we stand a pretty good chance of reaching ground zero by the first day of school. We're very, we're very hopeful of that, but we're monitoring it daily. Be happy to send you a copy of that report.
Thank you. Ms. Gordon, would you like to say anything?
Yes. Delighted to have him aboard, and I'm welcome. And I know that CTA wants the best for their teachers and for their support, so we're looking forward to working with them so we can make it happen, and at least continue to make it happen and move a little bit higher. Thank you.
Ms. Ghul?
I just wanted to give my welcome to, to the community, and very, very excited to work with you to even create a better environment for such a wonderful group of people who lead our students every day to success.
Thank you, fellow board members. You know, again, I reiterate what my fellow board members say. We value the role that you have, and we look forward to working with you, and I look forward to all the positive accomplishments we can make together. So thank you so much. All right. Any reports by attorneys?
I have many reports.
Thank you. Reports, okay. Ms. Moore, you said you had a communications report?
You'll all be receiving a notification of an up-and-coming communication, a committee meeting in the next couple of weeks to deal with a couple of issues with regard to the 145th. And then it was my intention, I was going to finish out chairing that next meeting, but it will be my last as chair, and so I was attempting to talk to the chairman to tell him of my decision to step down, but I was, so, but, so I wanted to formally say. I've done this for seven years, and I just thought it was, it was time for one of the rest of you who might have some fresh ideas to step forward and bring us to new heights of communication. So thank you for the opportunity to serve all of you.
Ms. Robinson?
You have been amazing. There's no way we can go to higher heights. It's almost going to be horrible having to, so any whoever agrees to take it and take it on after you've done a great job. Christine, you've, you've just, I mean, you've got us through to 1 mil and the half cent and both of the, the 1 mil twice, and it's just, you're doing a remarkable job. Are you still going to be on the committee? Okay, so you'll still be there with your brain, because we need your, your active brain. So that's awesome. So thank you for your seven years. It's, that's truly amazing.
Don't we have to vote if she gets off of it? Thank you, Ms. Moore. You've said, you, you certainly-
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, that would be the next time she's absent. We will take that action.
You've done a great job, so we do appreciate your skill in putting that committee together and, yes, right, and, and your perspective, so that was awesome. Ms. Cadel, you said you did not have a budget committee meeting report, right?
No, the budget committee that is formed by contract, it really is to look at budget priorities from both CTA and OESPA, and we had agreed that we would start meeting in January. The, the governor's budget, we think, will be out in December because the session starts in January. So usually we meet like February through March or April. This year it will be moved up, and Joseph Morgan, my assistant, is going to be working with Mr. Howard to get notification over to CTA and OESPA so they can mark their calendars for January, February, March, and perhaps an April meeting, and then we'll pretty well be wrapped up on that because we'll know in the early part of March what the state funds will be.
Thank you.
There won't be a report until then.
Perfect, thank you. As far as legislative committee, we're having a legislative committee meeting this Thursday from 2:30 to 4:00. We're, we're calling it a think tank. We're going to look at our political strategy as far as how we take our platform to the legislators. So that will happen to, at 2:30, and remember that all of these meetings are open to the public. Okay, Mrs. Gordon, do you have anything?
My, my, you know, it's a board doc, as you've already seen it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. So where are you right now? How close to home are you?
I'm on the outskirts of the bay of Georgia.
All right, well, drive safely. Oh, you're breaking up.
I can't hear you.
Say it again.
All right. I stay tucked in the woods, so you probably won't be able to pick me up, but I can hear you guys.
Okay, great. Okay, any statement of policy-level issues that the board would like to agenda for subsequent meetings or work sessions? Ms. Robinson?
Okay, guys, I've got a couple of policies that I had put, there's three on one sheet. I'm trying to conserve paper, but I'm going to pass them out to y'all and we can talk about them. Two of these have dates from '08, that they were amended or adopted in '08. I realize that when you look at our policies, most of them have the date November 17th of '08 because they, they did a massive update that night. That was the night before four of us were sworn in. So interesting, but the, the first one, if you look at file IC, school year, that's the definition of the school year, that first sentence, "The school year for students shall consist of 180 days of actual instruction. The school board may decrease the school year by a maximum of four days for graduating 12th graders, or in case of national state, blah, blah, blah." And then it references an education law and a statute. Two points to this. One, that the easiest of these is I know that we are having our graduation ceremonies way ahead of four days before the last day of school. Edgewater alone this year was 15 days, so five days per week, that's three weeks earlier. So we're, we're not following this, and I'm sure it's coming from state statute, I'm assuming. I have asked Amy Enval to investigate that. So that's one piece, which then if you look down at the second one there, IKFB, same thing, the first thing, "Graduation exercises shall be scheduled within the last four days of school." So that's just one that we need to look at. We need to figure out, did it come from state statute? And if it did, how are we going to get into line with it? I know it's very difficult because now, you know, when this was, say this was passed a long time ago, it's harder for our guidance counselors to even get the correct information to get the students to graduation on time. So I realize we need more time. So there's, might be the kind of thing that we need to go to Tallahassee and say, hey, we need clarification on this, we need to have it. But my, my other point, and then of course, well, we'll go to the back in a minute, that first sentence, "The school year for students shall consist of 180 days of actual instruction." I've asked her to, to, when she looks at the state statute, is the term, the two words, "actual instruction," are those in the state statute? Are we supposed to be instructing for 180 days, actual instruction? Where are those R words? Because as it stands right now, the way the state has us testing and testing and testing for the sake of testing- for the sake of testing, we're not doing 180 days of actual instruction. We're doing some of it, and we're doing many days of testing. So I think if that is truly from state statute, I kind of want to address that too and find out, you know, what do they want us to do? We can't have it both ways. So it's just, I'm kind of bringing that to the forefront so we can continue the conversation about it. And then if you flip over to ILB on the back, the title of it is "The Testing Program." It's Standardized Test Administration. Title is "Testing Program." That first paragraph, "The purpose of standardized achievement testing in the Orange County Public Schools is to provide information to teachers, administrators, parents, and community members about the academic progress of students compared to appropriate norms and standards. The information provided should be used as one source of information by educators at all levels to help improve the education of all students in the district. Information from standardized tests should be used in conjunction with other information in making educational decisions about students." Once again, this is, this one was adopted in 1995, so it's very old, and I'm just curious, are those our words, or did they come from state statute? And if they are from state statute, I don't think that that is what's really happening now. What we're being told to do from the state is not that. They're being, they're telling us to test, and it's not just one piece of information for a group effort to best monitor and educate and instruct, you know, direct instruction for our students. It's punitive, and they are, so I just, I kind of want us to dig into that a little bit, and so that's why I brought that to your attention tonight. And we can continue the conversation at our legislative strategic meeting, and when Ms. Enval gets the information about whether it really is from state statute, then we have somewhere to go back to Tallahassee with. So just kind of want to start a little conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Superintendent?
Ms. Robinson raises some excellent points. One, the notion that a large number of policies were deemed to be updated some years ago. Clearly, there's indication that there has to be a more thorough reexamination of those policies. That's part of Amy Enval's responsibility, as she's, as you clearly know, she's bringing lots of policies for updating and provisions. When I mentioned it to staff earlier, of course, they immediately did research and actually talked to DOE. The four days is not a requirement in state statute. Clearly, that is outdated piece of language that remains there. We don't know of any district that's able to get their students graduated, just cool. Our largest issue is having venues that will accommodate our parents and their families. Certainly looked at a third potential venue, FEF and Amway, and sometimes Amway reserves days for the playoffs in hopes that they may. It sort of limits how far back we have to push it, but I will submit to you, careful that we not push it back too far. And I remember under Ron Blocker, that date was held down, and I think over time, it just started to creep up again, and we had more dates blocked out by Amway, so we need to get on top of that. But they immediately researched, the four days prior to the end of school is not in statute. It's actually just our own language. Now, that does not mean the notion of actual instructional days should not be further researched, and I hate to tell you this, but part of what happened in the legislative session was a mandate for the board to go back and adopt new testing policies, so there's a vote load that we have to go back through based on what the new legislation says. It will probably take half a year for us to get through them, but we are required to adopt new policies around testing. I would be very interested if Ms. Enval or staff are able to research that term, "actual instruction." I guess is they won't be able to find it, or at least not with clarification. Now, Mr. Paul Marini is raising his finger as though he's found something. So, quick on the research. Mr. Paul Marini?
Yes, ma'am. 1,011.60, the statute that deals with participation in the FEFP, says the minimum term, it requires school districts to operate all schools for a term of 180 actual teaching days, or the equivalent on an hourly basis as specified by the rules of the State Board of Education. So it says 180 actual teaching days.
So let me further muddy the water. You're going to love this. So I wasn't going to read this, but since the attorney read some statute, let me read this language. Florida statute, section 1,003.436 defines a full credit as a minimum 135 hours of bona fide instruction. So there's actual, and then there's bona fide, "in a designated course of study. This language, which is related to high school graduation, represents an instructional design and should not be interpreted to mean that a student who is in attendance for fewer than 135 actual hours of instruction should automatically be denied credit for a course. However, state law doesn't prohibit school district boards from imposing an academic penalty related to student attendance." So we will further research it, and then we'll bring a large number of policies that have to be revised per statutory language this past session.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, and then I'll let you follow.
Mrs. Robinson, but it does bring up some interesting conversation on the legislative committee, and I know, Dr. Jenkins, you delivered a magnificent speech at the State Board Convention. I thought, I sent it to us and I read it, and I, you know, I could certainly see things where you probably worked over it to just sound like your magic in speaking, but the one thing that this board really has been able to be a leader on is our digital curriculum and trying to enhance the number of schools that are one, that we certainly can have additional time and instruction, and then we've got other issues with regard to putting forth funding to hire proctors to ensure that the teachers are actually in the classroom. And so with your comments about the fact that if the legislature continues with their testing requirements, that would be our hope that they would have a commensurate support to their funding, technology, and you had some wonderful speeches there with regard to our pilots, how adequate technology is for testing down, and so maybe that would be something we could explore. Say to the legislature, what, you know, you put forth in policies, what we're expecting is not happening. And one last thing, I, of course, grew up in New York State, and all of a sudden, I mean, I've been on the school board for seven years, and something, I heard something from home, I still have family members up there, 200 days. I go, well, that's why the vacation is so much longer than when I was in school in New York. I mean, literally, it's another month of school. So in your comments, you say, more mandates, more requirements, unless they want to extend the school day or extend the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for saying that you'll get them to investigate further about this, so we can continue the conversation. And I, the policy, the one on the back page of the page, ILB, the testing program, I just, I do, that, that one's the one, too, that that first paragraph really bugging me, because we all know that it might have started out from the state as a testing for instruction, and it has turned punitive. Originally, it was just punitive to our students. Now it's punitive to our students and our faculty. That really, really bugs me. So I just, I want us to investigate that further, and let's, and maybe that will come to light in the new testing statutes that you say they've sent our way, so.
I'm sorry, they didn't send a lot of guidance. They just said you are required to adopt new policies, so.
Oh, oh, okay.
So we'll be bringing some forward to you that match what is now required legislatively.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Dr. Jenkins, I did have a question in regard to, and I'm handing out the work session schedule that, well, I'm passing out the work session schedule that the chairman usually hands out. Speaking of testing for the work session that we're having on this Thursday, this Thursday, correct? I just wanted to reiterate to anybody, well, any of the public that's out there, if they hear this before then, this topic was requested months ago, and it's really to give us an update on just the whole spectrum of testing and how it applies to OCPS and how we implement it. I wanted to put that out there, because I think it's corresponding with some, I don't know, getting sort of tied up with our neighbor to the north of us, what they're doing and sort of, you know, saying we're talking about testing, but really, it's, I mean, we could get into that topic, but that's not the purpose of that work session, so I just wanted to reiterate that.
That is correct, Madam Chair. There's actually been a presentation provided or created for some several days now, and it has to do with updating the board and our community with what is currently in place, what we see is actually in place for this coming year. And I will tell you, that does, in no way is to belittle what may be done elsewhere, but our purpose of our workshop is not to discuss someone else's proposal. Should it come up, I certainly have a response, and what I will say to the board on that matter on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Following up on that, Dr. Jenkins, since I haven't seen the whatever that you're going to present on Thursday for open conversation, is there any way that we could, for the benefit of our faculty for this year, give them some kind of comparison chart in regards to testing, how it was prior to HB 7069 and how it will be, like what the changes are? Just, you know, kind of, I don't know if there's some way we could do a side-by-side for them, you know, whether, because we've talked about that there now won't be benchmarks. I mean, what are the, what are the real, that might be exactly what you're planning to cover, but, and then maybe if we could make it in some kind of simple document you could release to faculty with your news you can use or something like that, and, you know, the fact that data meetings might be going away, those kinds of things.
Ms. Robinson, all of that will be a part of the presentation. I don't know that it can be condensed to a simple chart, but we can certainly make it a document that summarizes all of the changes as well. And our principals will be prepared to talk with their faculty during pre-planning to say what used to be, for example, district-administered benchmark assessments, those items are being released so that teachers in their PLCs can work on some of their, and let me clarify, for non-STO schools, which are our most, our schools of the highest level of struggling students, then there'll be an opportunity for them to collaboratively work on their formative assessments to make sure they're informing instruction. And I like for folks to understand, we'll reiterate this on Thursday, the end result requirement is not going away, but we are going to give more freedom to teachers, and our principals will speak with them about that, more freedom to them on working on their interim checkups to make sure their students are trending positively, because at the end of the day, we cannot remove the penalties that the state has put in place. So we'll have that discussion on Thursday night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion items? Ms. Gould?
This is completely different than anything else we've talked about tonight, but we're having a lot of turnover in leadership of our media outlets. You know, the Sentinel has new leadership, Fox TV with Allison Meyer, she's been here a little while, but she's fairly new. We have nine and six, and I'm wondering if as a school board and leadership of the district, host them or act with them in some way and introduce ourselves rather than them covering us through their own.
I personally think that's a great idea. Ms. Moore is saying that she'll add it to her agenda for her last committee meeting when she passes over the torch to you, Ms. Gould.
It's just, you know, you only get this opportunity for honeymoon one time, and I think it behooves us to get in front of them, and as a group, so I think it'd be nice to host them.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Gordon?
Oh, I can't, I see you are putting it together, so I'll be at home by tomorrow.
All right, well, drive safely. Drive safely.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, I say that this meeting is bona fide, and it is adjourned.